Welcome to everyone for the Tuesday, October 23rd, 25th, Hall Day Board of Education Workshop Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand and attend.
Okay. And to the public, for what we're discussing this one evening. In this, but literally, we've been about two or three hours.
President Clements here, Vice President Valentine here, Justice McNally.
Here.
Justice Cooper here, Justice Francis.
Here.
Deputy Manner here. I believe that we do not have any changes to the agenda, so maybe we have the recommended action. Recommended action to approve the agenda. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as per. Name your motion, please. Oh, any motion?
You just got, you just got so.
Okay. I'll do a favor. Any of it? Um, the next Halling Board of Education meeting will be a business meeting after in the library at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 4th. But we will also, business meeting, but we're also going to have a special presentation, which is a technology detail report. The board hasn't had a technology report in a long time, and we're really looking forward to it. So, yeah, I know it's kind of early in your tenure, and the committee can take your on the top, but we can take the rest back to coming. Thank you. Looking forward to it. I think that my everything is, uh, I'm, you know, trying to get out and about. Um, got to, um, not all of them, but got to go to, I had the opportunity to go to a couple of the senior nights last week. It was just really great to, uh, see everybody here and, uh, out and around the city. So, great, yeah, that's it. A couple of updates online. And, um, last week I attended the School District Electric Bus Transition Forum, and that was hosted by lower Hudson Council of Central Districts, as well as State Center, Philly Mayor, and Sustainable West Packer. And it was a nice opportunity to bring together district leaders, state agencies, clean energy experts, just to continue to talk through this, um, bus mandate that a lot of the districts are trying to work through as we work through plans moving forward. So we actually had a chance to hear from four different districts already how electric buses in their fleet kind of learned the lessons, what's working, what's not working, had fun different things. So the Hall Day, the work only began last year. We did apply for EPA Clean School Bus Grant. I've said we didn't hear from the House of Funds, so I spoke to Allen and Alacrity back in September. I'm talking again in summer on Monday. And once I know where we stand with grants, then we can kind of move forward in our plan. So I'll keep the door updated as we go. It was nice to kind of come together with other districts and explore what people were thinking, how we're going to fund, significant challenges that this brings, but then also some of the exciting ones as well. So I'll provide some updates when we have them on. Tonight, we're also going to have a presentation about our external audit report. And I just want to make note that we received the financial statements a little later than typical this year. And so the Audit Committee had a chance to meet last week, but they will have a second opportunity to meet after tonight's presentation. That way, there's enough time for the Audit Committee to work through any questions they might have and then make that recommendation for the board to approve the audit, um, really at our next meeting. So that's happening in a couple of minutes. And then, um, we are honoring our board tonight. So you should see, maybe at the bar, like, hold up your hat to know that we are community firm, right? And it says pass off to our amazing board. And so this is a special week to honor everything that our board does, but really, we want to honor each other every day. We're very grateful for the number of hours you've gone through your time to really help put this your focus on communities, you know, accept, and really keep us focused on district mission and vision. So it's a small little token, but our hats fall off to you for all the work that you do and the countless hours and all of the support that you give each other.
Thanks.
Very big question. And that's what I'm first. All right. So, um, great, so now we have an update from our student board members.
Hi, everyone. I had the Tuesday with Dr. Choki last Friday, I believe, to formulate our. Think of that as coming up such as on the 17th, that is going to be the end of this Wednesday. If you don't know what it is, it is, uh, Wednesday, but yeah, there's no tests or quizzes, uh, just a wait room. Hopefully, with this, we'll get the high school to turn it on, uh, as well as reading our classical coloring activities for, you know, as well students. It's also a town show that week. Um, and January 30th will be a winter dance with a winter theme, as well as spring trips to the Renegade Baseball Game. And they just fished up their elections since student council, Parker fight, the president, the eighth grader. Um, and then to be told me about, um, the, this forum is going to be the job, the, the SPCA. Um, for special education class was reading a Gordon Corin book, a his book, and they're very inspired by the story, was an animal, animal book. They're very inspired, as many of them had adopted or had pets. Um, they all thought it'd be a great idea to start a nation drive, giving back to the SPCA. And they're actually going to go visit, um, on October 30th of this month to the SPCA, as well as the SPCA coming to visit the classroom to inform them about animals and all that such. Uh, in high school, there's Red Ribbon Week next week, which entails wearing red on Monday, I believe. The other days, I forgot, but, um.
So what does, does it signify the significance of red ribbon?
Drug free.
That's.
Good choice.
Good choice.
At the high school, we refer to it as drug free, and in the lower levels, it's making good positive choice.
Oh, fantastic. Okay.
Well, that's for.
Great. So, moving into our workshop. Presentation says, starting with, um, a report from our external auditor. Um, again, just following up on what Dr. Jeff has said, we're hearing from them. The committee has, um, the draft report and, and will be moving forward with making a recommendation at our next meeting. So looking forward to. Great.
All righty. Hopefully, you all can hear me. Yep, you can hear me. Okay. Perfect. All righty, good evening, everyone. My name is Kylene Fitzek. I am a certified public accountant and certified fraud examiner with the Bonde de O Group and the principal on the school district's audit engagement for the past many years, for the past decade, to say the least. So, um, we recently completed the audits and went over the audit reports in detail with the Audit Committee. I'm here tonight to go over a very summarized version of the audit results and answer any questions that may, any of you may have. First, I would, I do want to thank Catherine and the Business Office for all of their assistance during the audits. They, the Business Office and Catherine most especially, very responsive to all of our requests and very well repaired to ensure a very smooth audit. You know, audits are very, much of a collaborative effort, and we very much thank Catherine for her efforts and her hard work to get, um, all of our requests and everything to the finish line. So there were several deliverables that we provided to you. The first being the financial statements. The second is your audit of the extra classroom financial statements. And then the third being the required communications letter. First, starting out with the school district's annual audit, the financial statements includes the independent auditor's opinion on the financial statements. We are issuing a non-modified opinion on those financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can give you. The other report that we are giving you is, that's included in the basic financial statements, is the Government Auditing Standard Report. That report requires us to gain an understanding and report on the school district's internal controls over the financial reporting. And we're pleased to say that we are reporting no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in the financial reporting over internal controls. The second report is the compliance with laws, regulations, and grant contracts that non-compliance could lead to a material financial statement impact. And again, we're pleased to say that we noted no non-compliance. The school district is limited to retaining 4% of the school district's unreserved, unappropriated fund balance. The school district for fiscal year, for the fiscal year that we audited, we're under that limit at 3.85%, which can be found on page 59 of the financial statement report. We are also issuing the school district's annual audit of the extra classroom financial statements. We are, again, issuing an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. That's the best opinion that we can give you as auditors. So that's a very high-level overview of the audit results. Again, we want to thank Catherine and the Business Office for all of their hard work, their assistance, and everything, all their efforts and, and the collaborative effort that they provided us in order to get this audit to the finish line. And I'm open to any questions that any of you may have.
One of the past, we had, you know, we were trying to update our extracurricular processes on those account lines. Did it? And I, I know that there had been work by both the auditors' recommendations and by the Business Office. Did that come up, anything in your report regarding extracurricular accounts, the processes of which we go through in order to make sure that those are, so?
There were a few things that did come up in our, that we did more of a verbal comments that, um, during, during the processes of this, all that, that's very standard across, you know, I, I do audits, uh, 16 school districts across New York State, and it's very standards to come across the, um, I don't want to say lack of internal controls over extra classroom activities, but it's more so that, um, you know, club advisors and student treasurers and faculty advisors, they all don't have that necessarily, that business background. So we did not find this year any risk behind, um, behind those internal controls. So we did not, you know, further any, we, we didn't warrant any, any further letter or any management letter to, um, you know, to, to push that forward. So, um, Hall Day did a phenomenal job this year, and kudos to the Business Office, kudos to the central treasurers and the, the club advisors. We, we found a great improvement from last year going forward into this year.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, it's always tricky that.
I would say that you referenced the actual audit itself, the document, which isn't in our executive. But we, if we wanted to look at it, we could.
Absolutely. And I think it would be next time. I think, so I think one of the, I think one of the tricky things this time is, uh, some things did happen a little bit later, so the committee didn't get it. And then, so the plan, just so people know, is, uh, uh, Thomas Pearson, who's not only a new member to the committee, but is the chair of the committee, um, he'll be, you know, as is, is typical, the chair of the Audit Committee will be sort of, you know, um, putting in writing the committee's recommendation, and he'll be here, um, at that, at that meeting. And I think, um, really, right now, it's the version the committee guys receive still says draft. So I think once we have the final, that's when it really needs to go back out to the committee and to the board. Um, and so this is, uh, think of this as a trailer.
And I do, and I do just want to say one thing is that all school districts, I, I don't think, I, I've, I've had this conversation with many school districts that a lot of school districts don't realize that, um, there is a 30-day grace period. So, um, there's been several school districts, whether it be, you know, turnover or, um, maybe, you know, some, you know, things that happens in business offices throughout the school districts that they weren't ready for the audit, that there's no penalty. As long as you file your independent audit report by November 15th, there's no penalty whatsoever. So, um, we just do want to make that known that even though it's, we, we are having these meetings post 10/15, October 15th, um, there's no penalty whatsoever. Um, if there's, you know, anyone on the board or whatsoever wants, wants me to, um, provide a memo or provide the, the New York State guidance on that, I'm, I'm happy to, um, to, to send that forth to, um, the Business Office or the Superintendents. Um, but, you know, you, you have until technically November, November 15th to file the audit report with no penalty whatsoever.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to reiterate, you know, one of the things when you read through the statement is, is the, the auditors talking about how they didn't encounter any obstacles. So, right, so not only are they, you know, they're not encountering any obstacles, they're encountering a great deal of, you know, collaboration and cooperation from the Business Office, as well as, you know, as we've seen year after year, just really all the right, um, oh gosh, now the term is escaping me, but all the internal controls, all the appropriate internal controls and care that we would really want, um, the district to have. So we're very appreciative, uh, to the Business Office for their work and their collaboration. And, you know, um, thanks very much to the next panel auditors as well.
Absolutely. If any of you have any questions, um, we're, we're, we'll proceed with submitting the draft reports to our Quality Control Department. It takes about a five-day business, that's the final issuance step to get the, the, the final, final reports issued. It's, it's the independent, um, department that goes through the final issuance stage. So we're going to proceed with submitting those to our Quality Control Department, and then we will get those to with the next five business days. And then you can submit, submit the reports to New York State.
Great.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
You too.
All righty, goodbye.
I know. Thanks, Catherine. Is Catherine going to head off? Catherine, thanks very much. I know you're off, off screen, but thank you.
You're welcome. I'll talk to you all soon.
Great. Take care.
On the school, um, reconfiguration. And there's been a lot of thoughtful work and forward movement in this final phase of really what is Hall Day's response to declining enrollment. So, um, just to bring it to the Hall Day Essentials, which we are trying to look at everything through this lens. Um, districts can handle declining enrollment in many different ways, and I'm really proud and grateful about the way that Hall Day has chosen to handle this challenge. So I want to thank the board for that as well. Um, managing this issue has really been a masterclass in these essentials. Um, as we go through the update for tonight, I think that you'll see that. Um, and that there's really been a strengths-based approach to the challenge to our decline enrollment. So conversations about declining enrollment really began when the current eighth grade was rock, when they were rising sixth graders. So at the end of their fifth grade year, uh, at that time, there was only 40 students in that class. So now there's 48. We did gain eight students, um, uh, in that class. Um, but the reality is that enrollment protections really do show a consistent decline. So it's not, it was not just like a small dip class. It's, it's a consistent projection. So, um, the first thing that we did was create a common secondary, um, schedule and align that common secondary schedule with, uh, the elementary schedule. And what that allowed us to do was to have really efficient utilization of the human resources that we have and to maximize innovation in terms of course offerings for, for our students. And the next step of that is the, um, grade reconfiguration, so that the middle school could be a 5'8" middle school. The reconfiguration allows for proactive planning and a really purposeful restructuring towards, towards our values rather than a reactionary, um, react, you know, reactionary process for the declining enrollment. So, um, therefore, you know, the administration, the, the entire team, um, has worked toward implementing these following changes. And this is just a reminder of what's already been done. So, um, in aligning the, uh, middle school and high school schedules, we maintained middle school team teaching, structure and planning. We increased block scheduling to the afternoon because prior to having a common schedule, the afternoon didn't have block scheduling in the middle school. So what that means is that the middle school classes were all 42-minute classes in the afternoon, and now they're on a rotating schedule where there's 55-minute classes in the afternoon as well. So that's nice. Um, increased instructional blocks, improved space utilization, which of course is still a premium, but, you know, it's an improvement in space utilization, um, for a faculty schedule in K-12. We're able to now share faculty to use Google, which was something that was really difficult to do before. Um, and it also eliminated the need for so many six-period assignments. And we were able to increase elective offerings such as more sections of Model UN and this year, Financial Literacy and Fireman's Science. And we're hoping to continue on that, um, increase in innovative electives as we move forward. So the next slide I'm going to show you is a story of numbers. And, um, you know, I think that it really helped to explain the why behind what, what we're doing when I showed this to middle school faculty. So I hope it'll paint that same picture for you without causing any alarm because when, when something's well-planned for, there's no reason to be alarm, alarmist about it. So, um, just taking these numbers. So when I started, um, nine years ago, in the three grades, we had about 220 students. This year, we have 175 students in the three grades. So that's a big difference. Um, with the reconfiguration next year, we'll have 232 students across the four grades. But as we pull it out and you look to that last set of numbers, 2029, 2030, we'll have 186 students with the four grades. So action has had to happen on this. Um, and like I said, I'm very proud of the proactive action that we're taking. So, um, just something to, something to think about, you know, a story of numbers. In February, when we did an update, there were still a lot of questions around the feasibility of the schedule, how it's going to impact younger students. So there's been, um, a lot of work behind the scenes, and I thank Ms. Jammon and the administrative team because this is something that we all had to put our heads on. And, um, we were able to resolve most of the issues that were presented federally. So, for example, a huge barrier to scheduling was inadequate space to accommodate lunch and recess. Um, however, the elementary school is able to shift to lunch periods, which will allow grades seven and eight to still have their lunch, um, with the high school at 10:30. And grades five and six have their own lunch block at 11:15, which I think is, um, just a win-win-win all around. It's a win for the cafeteria because they're not racing to serve it, serve lunch to so many students all at once. It's a win for the younger kids because they have a full lunch and recess block of their own. Um, so, you know, I think that, that will work. One of the things that Ms. Jammon and I discussed, obviously, if we have the happy, you know, instance where there's an increase in enrollment and the elementary school swells in numbers, we'll have to go back to this because then the elementary school may not be able to accommodate only two, uh, lunch periods. But that's a bridge to cross when we come to it, and it's not, uh, it looks like it's going to be fine for a few years. Um, there were questions about contract considerations, like if we were going to add an advisory or, uh, issues like that. And those have largely been addressed, and the faculty has been identified that's going to be, um, coming over with the fifth grade for next year. So all of that work has been done, and those conversations have been had. And, um, most importantly to me, instructional, uh, concerns for younger children operating in a secondary schedule have been addressed. So, um, I'm very happy that with the, with what we've created, there's a five-six schedule that's nested within the common schedule, and that allows for less transitions for the younger students. It allows for homeroom. It allows for interdisciplinary instruction blocks because the core classes will be in the morning. So all of that was very important, you know, for, um, what I think are the best practices for teaching, especially for younger students, and we were able to create that. So really excited that we were able to overcome those hurdles, and now it's just full steam ahead. So again, thank you for working with Ms. Jammon. There's been a lot of preparation, um, already in place, um, for the reconfiguration that's going to take place next year. So the fourth grade is departmentalized this year, um, with extra consideration being given to preparation for middle school with supports for organization and structure through the departmentalized model and team teaching. Fourth and fifth grade will also have, um, moving up ceremonies, separate, separate moving up ceremonies. Um, and all of those, like, really special culminating activities that you would expect. So activity nights, T-shirts, um, end of the year trips and yearbooks, so that the current fourth grade is not going to miss out on any of that. That was really important to both Ms. Jammon and I. Um, there's going to be a parent night in the spring for both rising classes. And additionally, there's a frequently asked question document that's already started based on questions that we've received, and that will go up on the website. Um, and teachers have already started meeting, um, the first meeting is October, to plan and prepare for the reconfiguration. So that's really nice. So then the fifth grade teachers that are coming up to the middle school and sixth grade team teachers are meeting. The seventh and eighth grade are meeting as well because there are, um, you know, other pieces with the alignment that they're interested in improving and driving forward and innovating with. So, um, it's nice to get all the teachers together to plan on that. So there's still pieces that need to be planned, and they may not be resolved. These, these pieces are ongoing conversations that may not be resolved by the time we reconfigure, and that's okay. We may want to live with the reconfiguration for a year before making some additional decisions. So things like report cards, because the elementary report card, as you know, is different than the middle school report card, grading scales, um, role, um, curricular resource utilization. So for example, the, the current fifth grade math resource is different than the middle school resource. Same thing with ELA, so questions about that. Um, scheduling details, we basically have the schedule ironed out, but we're working with the teachers to get input to make sure that those that are going to live it, it makes sense to them. And there's oftentimes good ideas that come out of those conversations. Um, and very, I'm very excited about the fact that it looks like we'll be able to add a steam elective for the fifth and sixth grade right off the bat, starting next year, um, with the staff that we have and the schedule that we have. So, you know, we're really excited. Something that could be, something that could be looked at as like, you know, a huge, um, threat to a district or, you know, a huge burden, this declining enrollment. I think that we really have put to bear the housing, the best of the housing essentials, put our problem-solving hats on, and created a solution that's going to continue to drive innovation and be student-centered for the future. So with that being said, that's the update. Um, we will have enough, you know, I anticipate several more updates as we move, um, toward the finalization of this project. And, uh, but if you have any questions.
I was just wondering a little bit about, um, you know, what are we thinking in terms of communicating this to the parents? It's definitely creates some, a lot of questions, you know, a little bit of maybe stress for some people. So what's sort of the?
So we're going to continue communicating at the grade level. And then as we get near, I think that we'll discuss more district communications. So, you know, for example, at the fourth grade, um, curriculum night, the teachers fielded a lot of questions. And, um, then there were conversations with Ms. Jammon about those questions, and then those questions became part of the frequently asked. And then those questions became part of the frequently asked question document that we will post on the website. And we will go over during those uh curriculum nights for the uh those parent nights for in the spring. Um so there's, there are going to be a multiple layers of communication. Because I think that, I I believe that most fourth and fifth grade parents know that there's going to be a school reconfiguration. I don't know if like, I don't know if like junior parents know that there's going to be a school reconfiguration or if first grade parents know that there's going to be a school reconfiguration. So I think that's the piece that we might like that is still rolling out.
Yeah, we'll also put it in our, the district newsletter. We'll just identify which month we wanted to do the update first and then identify which month could it go to the Halloween horizons. And then just to add, we'll do some parent nights, but if we need to increase communication in different ways, we're certainly open to that as questions come.
So I I I I agree that a lot of fourth grade parents, so that's certainly my impression. This is the kind of thing though where you can imagine that families have different capacities to be attending to a lot of different things, even though I guess I've seen situations where an organization does a fabulous job of communicating really important information and it still doesn't make it to every single family. And a single family or that's, that's not great. I wonder, and I would certainly leave it to up to you all as experts, but there are opportunities where teachers encounter families one-on-one. And I don't know, like at curriculum night, do you have a handout to you get to everybody? Because I think what I think would be too bad is given how hard you all have worked on this and how carefully the district and the board has thought about this over time, for there to be any unnecessary hiccups. And anyway, that's just, that's, that's just a thought. But then that also raises a really good point though about really making sure. Um uh and it's actually, and you can imagine those families are new to the district, right? You know, that 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 just sort of understanding the the grade configuration. It's not that, it's not a super unusual grade configuration. Um and you know, but, but yeah, anyway, that's just a thought.
So I just want to say I agree with you that this is definitely a strengths-based, very, you know, forward um thinking approach to this whole issue. Um I'm curious, how's the fourth grade doing with the departmentalization? What's the feedback there? Are they leveling up? Are they?
How are they doing?
The big step for them.
So first I would go so far as to say every fourth grade family is fully aware.
Oh, that's great. Oh, fantastic.
Uh an explanation of the changes in departmentalization and how all of that was rolling out
Makes sense.
Went home with class placement letters this summer.
Oh, oh.
So because they weren't just getting a homeroom assignment, they were getting a homeroom and this is your homeroom teacher. But Ms. Hartford is teaching math and Ms. Casey is teaching writing and Ms. Philabom slash Ms. Newman is teaching reading. So they got those letters with their homeroom assignment letter this summer. And then at curriculum night, when they had their overview of like, hello, I'm your homeroom teacher, there was an explanation of like, I'm your homeroom teacher, but this is how all of this is working. So every fourth grade family is fully aware. Um the, you know, the K one, two, three, I would say is aware and that we did talk about it at like the full beating of curriculum night. Um but you know, they're still living their K one, two, three lives of, we're living in the moment of young elementary and we'll worry about those things later. So you know, we'll, but they'll also see that as their kids grow into it. So um and they'll also see, I think, that it wasn't so scary for those classes that came before them. So that's a benefit for them. So um how they're doing with the departmentalization is, uh you know, the parents had a lot of good feedback. I think it definitely was a little nerve-wracking as they grew into it. But um you know, the fourth grade team is, they've always been a really strong team. They've always collaborated a lot, uh worked together really well. But um they're doing really well with it. The, you know, like the fifth grade with departmentalization where you're first there, you know, you forget like, oh, I needed to bring my math book and I left it in the other room. But those are the anticipated struggles and that's why we're doing it in fourth grade. So then they get used to that and they get used to that organization because we want them to encounter that now. So that then they're ready and they're practicing those skills for when they're needing a little bit more independence. And that they're not um, they're not doing it without supports, you know, they don't go to sixth grade and the sixth grade teachers say, well, you were supposed to have mastered that. You know, so they're not going to go to fifth grade in the middle school and be expected to have mastered it, just like they're not supposed to have mastered it when they get to sixth grade. They, they go and there's still supports there. And the benefit is that at least for the next few years until the capital project, the fifth grade is still going to live in the fifth grade rooms that are in existence now. So even, you know, the mo- the majority of their classrooms are still going to be in the wing that exists in the moment. Once the construction moves down into the main building, the classrooms will shift a bit. But I imagine they're still going to be in proximity or in a place where there's some nurturing cohesive spot for them. So it'll be a different spot or slightly down the hall spot, but they'll still give space. So for the next few years, in the first few years while we're ironing out the kinks, it's still going to be a very familiar space for them.
Yeah, I love that we've minimized the number of teaches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, oh.
Just uh anecdotally, right? Like so my, my guy is a fourth grader. Uh he's been enjoying it, right? Uh moving around uh pretty, pretty successful, I think. Uh and then the grade parents have been, you know, they've been talking about, uh grade parents have been talking about this for a while, right? So not just this year, but you know, on the planning for the, you know, for the moving up ceremony and all that type of stuff. So they've been very well attuned, right, at the grade parent level for, you know, kind of what's happening. And so you're right, I kind of, but I, it would be weird at some level for us to miss somebody along the run who said, I don't know what's going on.
Right, that makes sense.
But it's possible. But it's possible.
It's gonna be somebody. I feel like in my life, there's that that happens all the time, but it sounds like it's not happening.
A minor logistical question. Does it make sense to have just the five, six together for lunch and then seven through twelve? I guess like instead of putting the seventh grade with the five, six, seven, I guess a lot of high schoolers leave campus anyway. So, okay, I was just thinking, spreading it out a little bit more, but this is what makes no sense.
Hmm, yeah, cool.
Have the, have the parents been, I I'm just curious about, there are certain milestone programs that happen in fourth, fifth grade. So for instance, will the fifth grade musical be shipped back? Will the fifth graders now be in the middle school? You know, just those different kinds of programs.
Yeah, the musical is one that's tricky that we'll, we're still going to have to figure out. So right this year, it's still four, five. Um the middle school has their musical production. So will it be a three, four musical? We haven't fully figured that out, or will it be a fourth grade musical, you know, the skills and production needed? There'll still be an elementary musical, but what will, what will that look like?
Right.
Will, there will still be something and what the grade level configuration will be, where that that one is still one we have to.
Yeah, and it feels like the importance of it is the culmination. It feels like you're moving towards it.
Yeah, and with the, I remember talking to a middle school student on our tour last year and she was concerned that only having one middle school play with the fifth grade would mean that not that many kids would get parts. So she was wondering about doing two plays. But that's, you know.
Everything's on the table.
So it's interesting. I mean, I think back to when we first started seeing these smaller kindergarten cohorts and it caught the district by surprise, right? It did not, that even though nationally we know and we hear about there being uh declining enrollment, it wasn't something that we really expected here at Haldane. And in my memory, Christine, you'll remember better than I do.
The enrollment study did not tell us this. The enrollment study said that we should have had classes of our typical sixty to sixty-five for the next four or five years.
Yeah.
And then it didn't happen.
I did.
We.
Can't figure out why.
Well, I mean, the only thing is that those are based on county birth rates and the county birth rate might be solid, but it may more, more, may be more towards the other side of the county. And then they didn't have solid information on what the spread across the county is, but that's pure speculation and I'm not a birth rate specialist.
There's just not the housing stuff. You know, it's like you think like all these like young families moved up during COVID, but there's no houses for them to move into.
I remember asking Christine, last time we were talking about this, when we were talking about like finding kids, where are the kids? And she said, no, I, I counted the kids. It's not that they're in the other school.
They're not, they're not, that, you know, they're not, it's not like they're enrolled at Manito or the others. Like we, we called, we called them to, you know, like I know, like I know in our kindergarten numbers, there are a couple that, you know, are still enrolled at boundary for kindergarten. And I anticipate they'll come to us for first grade. And there's a couple of families that have kept their children at Manito and they may join when they come up at uh after eighth grade. But it's, it's not as if those are huge numbers. I mean, there may be somebody who's, you know, at a complete private school and we don't, you know, but it's not.
Yes, but at the high school enrollment has stayed pretty steady and it does seem like it increases. And we have, we, you know, housing continues to attract, you know, a lot of students. So it's a lot of, there's a lot of movement.
Just, Julia, I've just got our best numbers from New York State Athletic Association. And we're at two fifty, we're two fifty-two.
Yes, yes, so.
A formula, but I can think.
It's a, it's a very, it's a complicated picture. And so one of the things, for very good reasons, this presentation has been framed around declining enrollment in the primary and early secondary grades, right? But I think it's really important for anybody paying attention that declining enrollment is not the only story happening at how, you know, ha- happening at Haldane, you know, because we do continue to see these pretty big high school classes, kids coming in, children coming in after Manito or and coming in from Garrison. Um and so that's one thing I just want to, want to put on the table, right? It's not like, you know, that enrollment of housing is, is falling off a cliff by any, you know, means. Um but instead, these small class sizes, I think, you know, it was actually Dr. Brannante that really got us on this road, really did present some opportunities. And as Mary Ann presented so nicely in her, you know, spoke about so nicely in her presentation, is it really affords opportunities for the kinds of increased electives, uh more uh you know, innovative scheduling, you know, but more, more electus for kids in the, in the middle school grades, but more electus for students in the high school grades too, right?
Ultimately.
Yeah, ultimately, yes. So I wanted to make sure I wasn't speaking. So there's all, there are a lot, there are a lot of opportunities. So I really liked how this was framed.
And I would say the consistent small class size doesn't start until the current third grade, right?
Yes.
The current third, second, first kindergarten is where up, up, up until then, we, we bounce, right?
We do, but we have.
The eighth grade is small, the seventh grade is large, the sixth grade is medium, the fifth grade is medium, the fourth grade is medium. Right? So like, and then from third on, we're, we hover around
Right.
fifty, forty-five, thirties, twenty-seven.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
That, that's where we start to get consistently smaller. But still, we'll have, you know, hopefully the twenties that come in from Garrison and you'll still have, even if you have a class of forty-five, if you get twenty kids from Garrison, that's still a, a healthy size high school class, but it's still smaller than anticipate, than, than current.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
On top of our administrators are already very busy lives. This is a big change. And I, you know, as Mary Ann said, she gave the presentation, but I know it's been a collaborative effort and everybody's having to think about solutions and ways forward. And I actually really like the idea, not that matters if I like it or not, but like, well, we're making a lot of changes, but we might not make every change for the first year, you know, we can see. I think it's, it's very, it's clearly that it's been very thoughtful. All right, so we are now at uh the first opportunity for communication from the public. The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. But first, public comment session is reserved for comments on special presentations and active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. We'd ask you to keep your remarks to three minutes or less and to avoid disparaging remarks of the discussion of district personnel. Um the uh superintendent or I would be in touch with you afterwards. All right. Um next is the um administrator information reports.
So wait, sorry. You want to go?
Oh, you did. Oh, I'm just sorry. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sign in and sign in, sir.
Not really. I'm so sorry, Jeff. I, I, I put you in the bucket of people who are come to the.
Um, thank you guys. So uh for the record, Jeff Sniffin, uh school teacher for twenty-six years here at Halden. Uh teacher in middle school for many, many years, sole studies teacher for the last seventeen years, uh team leader as well. Uh member of uh countless committees, um also involved obviously with this for the five, six. Um wasn't actually planning on talking necessarily, was, but I, I felt like we need to speak largely. First off, my apologies, my parents keep football practice, so I'm a little out of sorts and I apologize for that. Um I want to uh just applaud the efforts that one's put forth in this. I know this is a really challenging thing as a taxpayer and community member now. Um it's also, you know, we, we all have to try to strike that balance between trying to find what makes sense fiscally for our district while also trying to be the right thing for our kids. Um it's definitely a challenge. Uh we had a really good thing, I like to believe, in the many years that I've been at Halden at the middle school. Um you know, we've worked very hard at that, at that level because we know that the middle school child is a unique situation. Uh it, it presents challenges that are unique than just numbers. Um the idea of trying to foster what is going through as a student at the middle school level uh is, is a challenge that doesn't necessarily get graded. It's not something that we have measuring, using measurements to explore that we would have quantitative data. So I just want to make sure that as we move forward, which we of course have to move forward, I just want to make sure that we recognize that. We don't want to decimate what works well. Uh we want to try to, try to celebrate the best practices that we have at the district um and some of the great work that we've done. Um I also want us to obviously be thinking forward. Um not just because this is, this, I know, I know the number projections, the number projections. But I also want us to be thinking about what this means long-term and long-term. And meaning that, what I mean that by that is um I would love to see us be proactive about celebrating what we do so well here at Halden. Uh because not to make this like a private school situation where there's a recruiting component where we are celebrating what works, but we do need numbers at this school. We, we want to reach out to more kids. We want to do what we do well with more kids. And um I would love to see how we can be more proactive in that process, getting those kids who should, you know, have an option to come to Halden and be here at Halden. Um and I just want to leave it at that. So thank you, guys.
Next, we have the administrator information reports. Anything? Thanks very much, the administrators for their report.
I guess I'll note that it's good to see, in addition to reading the PPS report, and we came to speak at the Learning Differences Committee a few weeks ago, which was great. But it's good to see that our relationship with the Garrison School is going and continues and is growing and that we have new students being referred and coming in to program, you know, so I'm just happy to see that.
I was just gonna make uh two quick comments. And since I don't think Tom's on the agenda somewhere else, regarding our tennis team. Uh with Tom pointed out in his, his report uh of um we had several all-league players um and they won leagues, right? And then, and then had, you know, went, went on to sections, which is fantastic. So and, and that team has significantly ups. And no seniors. And no teams. And two courts. So uh testament to uh Coach Duder for uh creating a really positive program uh that has not only been a good recruit, he's done a good job recruiting players, uh but has seen success. So that's fantastic. And then I noticed in um Julie's report uh for the high school that November fifth, if I, if I have it right, uh that is um somewhat maybe to what Jeff's point is, is Somewhat maybe to what Jeff's point is, is that that's the going out to talk about uh to incoming students. Which uh is kind of what we actually have to do, which is selling. You know, selling Howding. Uh, I think we really do have a great product. Julie did a great job last time. Um, but I think we have a lot to offer uh our surrounding community and, uh, you know. Good luck, kudos to you, you know, for for doing that. Okay, appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right. So last year, actually Garrison invited the board to come for your presentation. That was very good. Um. And I have to November fifth, I should put on my calendar.
So November fifth is actually um the presentation here.
Oh, they're here. That's right. You, they are.
And then meeting with the board. They haven't reached out yet for a day.
That's right.
Last year it felt like it was something that hadn't, we hadn't been doing. So it was just a renewal.
Yeah.
But we could, I could reach out if that's something of interest, we could set up another.
Julie needs to have a second presentation, but and it was so good and so thorough last year. So but that's that's, thanks for clarifying that. I had forgotten that. I just remembered that, that's.
We got a private concert too.
Oh, yeah, it was great. Yes.
That was actually pretty good.
It was great. Entertain me, I'll show up.
Yeah, actually, before we go on, and I don't mean to, I'm gonna actually do something not completely according to the agenda. Luke, I wanna be mindful with their presentations. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but it also having you here is new to me. I'm not, so I'm not gonna ask you to say anything.
He's not putting on you on the.
I don't wanna be on the spot, but I I also wanna, I'm also saying that I'm. We're not used to having a student member here at our meetings, and so if there are spaces where you have things that you wanna add. Be be assertive, you know, be feel enfranchised. I want you to be really though, like again, I feel like I'm still getting. Used to it, but I really wanna communicate directly to you, and I'll try to do the same thing with Max, that you should feel enfranchised if there's a comment you wanna make. It has to be a question, you know, we're here for your perspective, but I also don't wanna put onto a math pressure on you either. So anyway, that's where we are. So. It's okay, Max is only, Max is a sophomore. By the time Max is a senior. Luke is a sophomore. By the time Luke is a senior, I'm sure you may have lots of things to say to us. Apologize for them naming. Okay, so now we're moving into the committee minutes. So we have committee minutes from the district wide safety team. And if anybody wants to speak about that.
Uh, one of the main conversations we had is we were walking out the door had to do with ongoing concerns with. Traffic and the speed at which certain uh parents drive and, you know, visitors to the campus do come Craig cited. You know, seems recently like there's always a major vehicle on Craig side that's mucking things up as people are trying to do drop off and everything. So as we continue to. Conversations about where the buses go versus where, you know, the personal vehicles go. I think it's it's wise to just keep that in mind.
It's a big deal. It's on our top of mind, absolutely.
Um, and then the policy committee. You know, we have a policy later on.
Oh, yeah, we are required to have a universal pre-K policy for community program. So that was um Megan pulled together. Um, policy for everyone to take an appointment. Good. And then we we spoke about a couple of the things, um, but I don't think anything. Pressing a little bit about student attendance. School safety and district new child.
Great. Um, okay, so now moving into. Um, consent agenda, starting with consent agenda minutes. May we have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Thanks.
Um, consent agenda personnel, may we have a motion, please? I don't think there's anything looking at this again, well, regular things. So, um, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Um, and then new business, we have the CSE. Yes, you said the Committee for Special Education and the Committee for Preschool Special Education Recommendations. May we have the recommended action, please?
It resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education. And preschool special education as presented.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the policy review. This is the first reading. It's a brand new policy, so this certainly makes sense. We'll have a first reading and a second reading and. Next time, but um. Uh, this is right, the policy, we needed to have the policy and then we also needed to clarify. Uh, the age of entrance, right? Now that we have a a pre-K.
Yeah, it's really straightforward. It's basically like repeating the language that we use for kindergarten, you know, like for the age for uh pre-K, which has to be age four by December first. And then really um how the registration process happens, that it's a random lottery, not guaranteed a seat just because you live in the district, that those sorts of things.
Excellent. Um, so next actually is also a discussion item. So. We as a board don't tend to go to these kinds of events, but this is actually kind of a nice event and I wanted to draw people's attention to it. So this is a meeting that draws from a lot of different areas. Um, and it's a, it's like, it's so what it says, the Regional Superintendent Board Dinner and Symposium. Um, I went with Phil a couple of years ago and we saw a presentation on um the uh. It was related to the Portrait of a Graduate, the change in the high school. Um, graduation requirements, not directly, but it's a night, it's at Tilly Foster Farm, the food's really good. It starts with like a little. You know, like hors d'oeuvres, you see, you know, other people in the in the in the district. It's a, it's a nice dinner. And then this year, the talk is going to be on um the.
Garrison to play up here in Howding. And when we're thinking about trying to continue to build our numbers for a high school. Um, I think you'll hear from Tom in a little bit. He'll go over the process of what the board needs to follow. First, our board would agree to it and then if that was a go. Then Garrison's board would agree to it and then there's a process we have to follow, but just in the spirit of what we heard from Jeff and just talking again about declining enrollment and. Continuing to build our numbers, this is an exciting opportunity for the board to consider. So Tom will turn it over to you.
Okay, uh, thanks. Let's give it nice. Beginning to that, but um I don't know if everybody had a, first of all, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, has any, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the policy? So just I'd highlight a couple of things, just a brief history at the top. Um, this came into effect in July of twenty seventeen. So just some history, when I was here from twenty ten to twenty fifteen, this was not part of the process. It was asked about, but it was not part of the process. Wasn't allowed by New York State Education Department. So then, um, it changed obviously in that, you know, we have a K situation. And we may, as a district, work with the K, which is Garrison, to file the athletic placement protocol, which allows the opportunity. The key word here is for exceptional student athletes, right? So we were given a recommendation. Of a particular player that is a current eighth grader at Garrison who's an exceptional athlete. That recommendation came from our coach. So we're in that beginning phases of, okay, our next step, as Dr. Duffy mentioned, are we come to you as a board? And say, hey, is this something we're, we are interested in doing? You give us the okay on that and we go back to Garrison. And then we start the process of working with Garrison and starting, because APP is a physical fitness test, it's a medical piece. So there's a whole breakdown and we would just start that process. So right now we're in the beginning phases. We do start the season. Uh, November seventeenth, so we're kind of on a tight timeline with that. Um, the process, you know, doesn't, we haven't started our APP process yet for winter, but we are in strong discussions of getting it started soon. So we have a few kids that we are going to be looking at to also, you know, again, exceptional athletes to be at the JV, definitely the JV level. Um, again, this is grade seven and eight. And one of the key things, I don't know if you noticed, uh, I think it's the second paragraph. So person comes over to play. That's from from Garrison, alright? If they choose, say at the end of their eighth grade year, to attend a different high school with which, you know. If they say they come here and they're not gonna go to Howding, they go to one of the other two schools, they would be ineligible to participate in that sport in their first year of high school. So that's something I think that we would, I would educate the the parents on that, obviously, say, hey, look, you know.
They're like red shirts?
So, no, it means that they're not eligible, like their season would be done. So if they're playing basketball for us and went to one of the other two schools. In their freshman year, they would not be able to play that sport. At all. So it counts as a year. So then they can only play grades.
It's like a transfer.
Right, exactly. That's, so I just wanted to make sure I mention that in here because that is an important piece of the clause. All the other stuff I think you've read through. I don't know, I'm basically here to answer any questions you may have.
I guess, and maybe people, but the one thing I wanna make clear, right? So it's a. That the, my understanding of the status is. There's a request from a coach, goes to the athletic director, the athletic director brings it to the board. This board has to decide if it's something that we would wanna do. This is the one thing I think I'm not clear on. And then it's actually at that point, then the Garrison board takes it up and my. Um, I I did have a com- a a communication with the Garrison School Board President. And I think they started to take it up, but they decided to not fully take it up until. There was a sense of how, they at least had a sense of how Howding wanted to. Um, I guess the one question is, does it happen, do, is is this a process for every single student or is it more, that's one that you got not clear on.
Just around this student or would it be?
Or or would we be sort of adopting this policy? I guess it would be every single student.
It's it's a case by case basis. It's based on the case.
It is.
You know, that's.
And every time.
And it's the same for our own students. It's a case by case for.
But I mean, in terms of the board's involvement, right? So when it's a Howding eighth grader. The board had nothing to do with it, right? But in terms of like this, I, this notion.
A non-district student.
A non-district student, if the board would be involved every time.
Yes.
But we usually have, but it, the the way that I understand it is it's like test up, which we do, and a merger.
Right.
Which we do.
With with Garrison talking about?
Yeah. When it's a merger for, you know, this.
It's for middle, for modified sports.
Modified sports only, but this is not for a modup side.
No, this wouldn't be.
And so, but but in my mind, the the mechanism, right, the similar mechanism is like the merger. So it has to be approved by.
It has to be, there's a resolution by both both have to accept. Yeah, it's the same, that's exactly right, same process.
Do we not have to provide transportation?
Exactly. So it's, we, right now we do shared transportation.
Right, right, right.
Um, but in this situation, it it's, if we have later practice, it's just like any of our kids, you know, you know, it's. It's similar, but the only transportation would be like we do for Garrison now, they would come to us when we merge, we would travel. Cause they they bring a bus to us every day at three twenty. And then, so it'd be the similar type thing. But anything beyond that, transportation would be parent driving to practice and so on.
I mean, of course, it does, it will open the door to more parents and students potentially wanting this. And I know this particular athlete is exceptional. But if they're only needing to reach the same standards as, say, a Howding eighth grader in terms of testing up. Might we end up seeing more Garrison seventh and eighth graders wanting to kind of come and compete for those positions because they think they can pass that?
Don't pass what?
Yeah, that, what's it called, the APP?
Yeah, but again, you have to have a coach's recommendation.
You have to have a coach's recognition. That comes first.
This this basically, the way I understand is this started with our Howding coach.
I I think that's the key, right? Um, because did this start from a Garrison parent or did it start from a coach? I think, you know, moving forward, as Michelle said, uh, we can anticipate. Um, you know, more more parents from Garrison wanting their kids to sort of try out for these JV and and varsity sports. Um, and I just, you know, again, I I like the idea that it's a case by case basis, but you know, if there's a way to somehow create a protocol, right? That we go through where it's not coming from a Garrison parent, right? It's coming from the coach. And I don't know if the coach is recruiting or the coach is at least in tune to what's going on, because obviously this is a non-district student that doesn't pay taxes, they're not paying tuition. Um, and there's a chance that they're taking a roster spot or they're taking playing time away from a Howding high school student, right? Um, and so much of that is subjective and the last thing that the board needs to do is to be embroiled in a in a subjective. Um, student athlete, you know, situation or answering to district parents. Um, who are upset, right? So, um, I just, you know, as long as there's faith in that, the the coaches really have a say in this. And it's not, you know, en masse inviting non-district students to try out for for Howding teams.
Is that not the policy for test up?
Yes, it is.
To begin with, right?
It is.
Test up, you have to be invited by a varsity coach in order to test up.
Right.
You cannot just say, I wanna test up.
Right, but you know, there's.
Yeah, I know, that's the process that we follow.
So, so, so Tom, I would assume, even if it, you know, ideally originates with a coach. That you're part of those conversations about whether or not to bring it to the board.
Absolutely.
And so I guess I think, and I. I guess what I would want to know is that, like last week or last last meeting, we had a conversation. Or we've been having conversations about wanting to really build our teams and really build, I think. Uh, uh, create a lot of opportunities for all of our students to be on winning successful teams, right? So that's that's one goal. But I do also know that part of athletics is just giving our 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 students, right, the opportunity to have. To to be on teams and participate in athletic endeavors. So anyway, I guess I would want. There to be some consideration about the how, you know, Howding students, like the students who are at Howding, who are, you know, sophomores, juniors, seniors. On the varsity teams and what the impact of having a student play up would be on them. Not just for their individual experiences, but for the health of that particular program, right? And I. I think I'm sort of saying the answer I want, but I didn't know how to ask the question, sorry. And so, you know, I don't know, I mean, that's, and I guess, the Dr. Duffy, that goes to you as well.
To me, you know, I feel like we need to offer it an opportunity for someone to be successful, right, a student athlete. And this is an exceptional student athlete, and I would say the same about our own seventh or eighth grader. Um, that's just how I do it personally. Again, that's a decision as a board. I I hope that we get the information that can have you make. A decision that you feel is best for our our community as well. So I'm just, you know what I'm saying? So me personally, I feel like this is a great opportunity. Did not only for this particular athlete, but maybe for for our for our programs.
And that's the other thing, we're putting our faith in you to sort of know, but as a case by case basis, like this is, you know, the we're we're talking about, you know, a program. That doesn't have a very deep bench, right? There's not a lot of bodies. This is great for that, even though the rule says it's not to fill roster. But coming down the pipe, this particular program, there are more, you know, it's going to be hopefully a little bit more robust. So hopefully that will weigh in.
And and this is, as it is with with the regular merger, it's it's a you, it's a case by case, year to year situation.
Right. I mean, it feels like at some point, and maybe this is something. I, you know, it it feels like there should be some sort of checklist about the things to consider, right? So there's. There's and 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 what's the hierarchy of those needs, right? So there's, there's the, there's the health of the program. But then there's also really wanting to make sure that the the students who live in the district, who've been playing on the team. That their educational and personal experience of being on the team will be enhanced. Not harmed by this. And I I can imagine it's tricky. I guess that's, you know. So I guess the question I should have asked for, what are the criteria that the athletic department would go through? Before making a recommendation like this, you know, like what 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 are, I think that's something that we just want spelled out, like what are the considerations?
I think Maggie mentions that, you know, right now, it's it for our program.
Okay.
It would benefit. That's my personal, that's that's how I feel.
Yeah, and and the experience of the girls, not just the team will win, but that the girls will have good.
Yeah.
And then I think it's all.
And then I think it's also as we currently do. Being mindful with our coaches of how we are supporting all of our students, whether they start. Are they on the bench? How are they continuing being given feedback, given guidance on their skills, how to improve? So that's. Like part of my entry plan, I'm meeting with all the fall coaches right now, just to get a better sense of how each uh team is um coached and. What our strengths and areas of growth are. And that is one area, like how can we continue to provide support for students who aren't getting that playtime? What type of feedback? Support, uh, skill development, might they need? This kind of ties into that. So if we're adding additional. Goals on a team, you want to be mindful of the impact of the higher team.
Yeah.
There's one other point, I think, and it's common in small schools. Is that uh we don't always field JV teams. We don't have the number if you look down our arm. Right now, we don't have numbers. For JV, that can be problematic, right? Because especially depending if you have hot high rate of seniors. And you don't have enough younger players to fill a JV team. And we're have, right, so, but that's not, that's not a uniquely Haldane problem. That's a small. Issue that pops up all the time. There are times where a small school's varsity team is lights out really, really good. Because the kids have been playing varsity since seventh and eighth grade. And they've been constantly, you know, and there's a cohort of them and they never had a JV team, but they were, but. There was never enough kids for a JV team. Then there's, you know, so. I I worry about the not like, at times I worry about that that number conversation, like do we have enough spots? But then also, we're also not even running JV teams, right? So like we, we should have more spots. We want. Like we, we should want a JV.
Right, and that's, and that's how we determine our case by case, what our numbers are right now, you know, right? I can go right down the list. You know, where our our higher numbers right now in the fall are, boys soccer's got high numbers. You know, our girls soccer doesn't only has modified in varsity, right? You know. Volleyball has solid numbers. They have all three levels. So you know, and so that's what, that's what has to be taken into account when you, when when this situation arises.
Right, right, which you'll know.
Yeah.
Tennis needs about five more courts. We can stack them, right? Can't you? I lost.
Part of our work, like Tom and I have had a lot of conversations in terms of. Again, looking at the strength of athletics currently, but then where are those pockets of growth? And some of that, ew, when a busy, we have a handful of teams that go from. Modified to varsity. So for those students, they're missing that JV foundational time. So how can we continue to strengthen? What we offer? And so that's definitely a topic of discussion and Tom will have some updates for the board in a couple of weeks about some of the plans that he's working through, but. It's an opportunity of growth, I think, for athletics. Um, and also to still capture and build upon the great success of. How our teams have been doing, our great coaches and continuing to provide those experiences for students.
If I was Garrison, I wouldn't want to let these kids go, though. I find that that's.
That's what they have to do.
Their board's gonna say no.
Right, oh, right. Um, so what does the board, what do you need next from the board? Like, do we need to act on this?
At this point, we need to know if this is something that the board would consider. And if you would consider, then I can call Garrison tomorrow and let them know that. And then we'll come back together probably the next board meeting with some type of resolution.
Okay, so we would need to have a sense. I think my my sense is. We meet all the deadlines and for Garrison, more also have, we'd need, it would be important to know now. If if there seems to be, we're moving towards a consensus towards saying yes, and that's the feeling that I get.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And something. Um. You had, did you have a question at one point?
Yeah, all right, all right. Luke, Luke had a question, but I think we maybe we got.
Oh, yeah.
Ask it again.
Ask if Garrison kids can play varsity sports at other schools like O'Neill or.
So they have to go through the same process to have that.
And is the merger the foundation? Like, does the merger have to be in place for that particular sport or no?
No, this is just a perfect resolution.
The resolution on our merger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Luke, why would they want to?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a good.
It's a good question.
Question. I don't know what the philosophies of those schools are. I mean, I would say, you know, one of the things we've we talk about. Is historically, there is more of a collaboration, I think, between Garrison, Haldane, because we're we're close together. And so.
Yeah.
What?
We're Phillips.
We're all for Phillips Town, yeah. We're in the same town, you know, and. I mean, you know, kids play on the same rec teams and things like that. And so, um, but that's a real, that's a really good question. Yes.
Thank you for asking.
See, got a free looking all around. Okay, so um, I think that it. Um. Uh, second opportunity for communication from the public. This time I'm not gonna rush.
And sign it again.
I got it.
Jeff, we need to hear more often.
Do you, do you really want me to often stress out this, these, the length of these meetings? Uh, Jeff, and then again, uh, not just school teacher, you also coach, uh, coached football and I coached baseball, coached softball. Here in the community. Um, I have just a little bit of insight about this particular issue uh personally. Because uh my daughter had this similar circumstance in it, but from a unique perspective. My daughter, uh, we started our softball program up when my daughter, to keep her freshman year, uh, when we moved into the community. Uh, it was like dormant after after COVID. Um, so we had to build a team and build rebuild the program, which we had about eleven players. To play softball with, uh, she being one of them. Um. We had, we had a foundational year, uh, and we were able to kind of rebuild our program from from the ground up. But it was pretty clear that during that year, we wondered, my wife and I wondered, uh, whether or not she fit. Because she was one of those kind of exceptional players. We pushed forward with it anyways. Only now I have a lot of coaches give me feedback throughout the year that we were competing against saying, why is she here? She should be playing varsity, to which my response was, I didn't know, uh, I didn't know what what kind of options I had. Kind of thinking about our merger merger relationship we had with Puck Valley. Uh, we had another player who was playing up there who was a senior or a junior at the time. So. When the second year came through, we were able to build our program uh to get more sustainable numbers. Uh, we started to have a lot more success with the kids that were coming from the lower ranks. Kids, by the way, who tested up from Haldane. To be above from the from those schools to become part of the of the JV team. Uh, while we also had to make a decision as parents, because we were fortunate enough to have this relationship with Puck Valley. For my daughter to go and play at the Puck Valley team. She didn't have a varsity option. So this was the only option she had at that time. And it turned out to be the right decision for her. She had a very successful year. She got a chance to forge these lifelong relationships with these kids that were over there. Uh, she had a lot of success. This quite interesting questions that came up at the conversation, but I, we thought about, I'll be taking a spot away from another kid. Is that right for the Puck Valley community? It seemed like the families all there, wholeheartedly endorsed our kid and her presence. And the success that they were able to have to get. It was a pretty awesome experience. In fact, quite frankly, I don't know if my daughter would be playing college softball today if it wasn't for the experience that she had of that merge team. Couple of thoughts that came to mind. The reason why we made this decision, safety was one. You know, she was, she was just a bigger, stronger kid than a lot of the other kids at the lower level. It was a safety issue. The other thing, the appropriate level of play. I mean, she. Not only did she go to Puck Valley, she wanted to become the league MVP that year. She had over five hundred, set a record for home runs both in Puck Valley and Haldane as a sophomore. So like clearly she was appropriately placed there. Uh, the third thing, um. It was the appropriate option at the time because we had a local partnership with a local district, much like what we have here at Garrison. Um, you know, for us, something that again, we just talked about it and it's only once I just clicked to meet and speak, was we're just talking about enrollment numbers. Here we are, it's another opportunity to spell what we do well.
Right.
And here's an opportunity to bring people in. And like to Tom's point, if this, if this particular student is coming in, student athlete is coming in, you know she's going to commit here. Uh, that's, that's a win for us, I would think. Um, and then, you know, um, this is a unique option situation because. This poor kid doesn't have any other options, right? She can't play varsity sports because there's no varsity sports play on. Other than Haldane or the other school options. And again, it's a case by case basis. So, um, you know, obviously you guys are going to figure this out, make the right decisions, some of you guys are pursuing it. But just wanted to offer my feedback and insight as from a parent of a student from Haldane who had to go to another place. It was a pretty good work experience. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I thought you were gonna come and say, why didn't you call me out for being taking over debate? Notice that on the line.
Okay, um. Board reflections?
Uh, just super quick, I had the opportunity to sit on the um Code of Conduct Committee and was really impressed by the. Uh, admin team and uh the student uh member as well as the parent or as well as the uh teacher member. There and uh was just really creative uh conversations. Uh, to deal with lasting problems, which I I I think was really impressive.
Great. Anyone else? Need fun?
I'm just hearing some noises and I'm not quite sure, like burning out my hallway.
It's outside.
Yeah, probably.
Play practice.
Play practice. I'm like, I'm hearing, I'm like looking around.
It's yours, maybe.
Um, I I just, I want to highlight Luke. I really appreciate having you here. And just offering that perspective. And it's even a nice reminder for me as we're thinking through. The topics, looking over at you, thinking, I wonder what he's thinking. So I'm going to try to also do a better job of. Engaging you a bit more, but it's a pleasure to have you here with us and looking forward to having you at more meetings.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Um. And yeah, absolutely. And for me, it's going to be finding the right spot between.
Between the two of us.
And that period of spot. So anyway, got, let, gotta learn. Um, all right, no more. Okay, so the board is going to convene into executive session for for the purposes of discussing a legal matter. Uh, I'm going to, we will adjourn from the that that meeting. Um. I am going to move to go into executive session. May we have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed?